Ladies and legends.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now would Ms. Emily Thomas come up for the invocation, please?
Loving and gracious God, you are the giver of every good and perfect gift, and we thank you today for all of your blessings, for blessing the outcomes of our school events, and for all of the staff members, both the teaching and support members. We ask that you would help them to do their jobs with excellence, and we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with this school board in their deliberations and help them to be discerning in the decisions that they make for the good of all those who have put their trust and confidence in their leadership. Give them insight to lead with integrity that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. We ask that you would keep them from short-sightedness and pettiness, help them to make decisions that are good, that are for the good of all, and guard them from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant them the humility to always seek your will in all that they do and say. Bless this community, we pray. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always, through Christ Jesus and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen. Let it be.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bless you.
Okay, we'll start our presentations with Anthony Gedrus, please, if you'll come up to present a certificate to Miller Middle School student Jedediah Santmeyer. I probably didn't say that correctly, but...
Thank you for this opportunity to come out this afternoon. If I could at this time, have Jedediah and his family come up?
Before Anthony talks, I just want to point out, Anthony did the presentation at the county commission meeting recently, to Jedediah, and I invited them to come here, and this is quite a story, so thank you all for coming today.
Is it gonna make me cry?
Probably, so get tissues ready.
You always cry.
Go ahead and grab them. Last Tuesday at the Board of County Commission meeting, Jedediah Santmeyer was presented with the Citizen Medal of Valor by the Department of Emergency Services. And I'd like to read the citation that was presented at that time. "On the morning of June 27th, 2017, fire department units responded to a structure fire at 114 Peggy Lane in Georgetown. When units arrived at this location, they found two structures and three vehicles on fire. Fire crews were advised that all occupants were safely out of the home. During the investigation, the heroic actions of 11-year-old Jedediah Santmeyer were revealed. Jedediah, who was in the home with his younger brother and grandmother, heard a noise coming from the far end of the home. He went to investigate this noise and discovered smoke coming from a bedroom belonging to another family member. Jedediah was unsure if that family member was still at home, so he entered the smoke-filled room, remembering the survival skills taught in fire prevention programs at his local school. He stayed low to the ground, checked the room, checked the bed, and the remainder of the room to ensure that it was not occupied. Jedediah found the room empty and quickly exited the room. He immediately went back to where his brother and grandmother were watching TV and alerted them of the danger. Jedediah, at the direction of his grandmother, escorted his younger brother to safety and remained with him until neighbors directed them to a place of safety away from the incident. Jedediah's actions on that morning went above and beyond the expected actions of an 11-year-old child and clearly demonstrated his selfless courage to protect the lives of his family. It is these actions and selfless courage that qualify him for the Citizen Medal of Valor."
Chris Lee, come down.
I want to invite Chris Lee, his assistant principal from Miller Middle, come in. Did we get his grandfather in the picture too?
Everybody huddle up.
I do.
Second in, Chris.
Closer than that?
Right there.
Oh my goodness.
Stop crying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may add one additional comment, last week was Fire Prevention Week. The board also issued a proclamation for that, and I'd like to thank Dr. Surrancey and the school district for continuing to be a partner in the area of fire safety education. It truly is that early elementary school fire safety education that is paramount to teaching these type skills to the youth of our community. And I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to come into the schools and conduct that training and education.
Now we'll have Dr. Surrancey going to recognize Mr. Torres for his efforts in aiding residents of Puerto Rico after Hurricane Maria.
If I could ask Jay Torres and his principal Evan Langston to come up, please, from Aquila Just come on up here, because I know, I want to ask Jay to give us some details, but first of all, let me just have Jay talk to us about his efforts to aid the residents of Puerto Rico and the, what he did to put all that together is quite remarkable, and then I'll do a little presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Surrancey. Good afternoon. So, on September 20th, it was a Wednesday, I knew the hurricane Maria was gonna hit Puerto Rico, and 95% of my family is back home, really big family. Only my sister and my brother live in the States, about 200 family members and friends and family back home, so I tried to talk to my mom, tried to text her, she's one of those that hated cellphones, and now she's on Facebook all the time. She's not responding, I called my dad, no one responding, and then the news came up that the whole island was, there was no power, the electric grid was gone, and it breaks my heart to know that I was complaining that I was without power for three and a half days, when right now, my family is on day 28, and some family members are on day 41, because when Irma came a few weeks before Maria, they have lost power already with that. So, I decided that I needed to do something. I got in contact with an organization from the Tampa Bay area called Course of Action Puerto Rico, in conjunction with the National Guard of the Tampa Bay area. We did a little big of the donation, and we were talking about how to do it, so I got with my principal Ms. Langston and our Mr. Thompson, and then our school secretary, our school receptionist, Ms. Stran, and we're just like, let's do a school-wide thing, we could do it together, let's see what happens. So, these are our numbers, about 2,000 bottles of water, 4,600 diapers, and over 1,000 pounds of canned goods, just in our school alone, and some people from other schools that help. And I appreciate everybody's help, but we have about 500 pieces of clothes for people back home. People, if you watch the news, you hear different sides of the story, are they getting help, they're not. I could tell you from family members, my aunt who lives in a town called Wanika, about 40 minutes west, on the southwest coast of the island, she just get FEMA to her house just three days ago. She got a box of food, she's a family of two kids, a husband and herself, inside for a whole week's supply. FEMA from Puerto Rico gave her two cans of tuna, about 10 snacks, you're talking crackers, Oreos, a few bags of chips, and two cans of beans, for a whole week's supply. So, when you hear the news that they're getting everything they need and they're getting all their support, it's not, it's not reality. They're suffering, people are going hungry. My uncle who lives in the countryside on day 44, because he lost electricity since Irma, and right now, 91% of the island has no power. The number when it was lower, 13% of the island had power, and three days later, it went from 13% to 9%. Many people are fleeing Puerto Rico, right now, the numbers are over 100,000 expected to leave the island, and those lucky ones to have left, that left in humanitarian flights, I'm lucky enough that my folks, my mom and my dad, go into humanitarian flights, they were looking for H, they were looking for pregnant ladies, they were looking for families with young kids, and those people left the island first, but everybody else is right behind stock, because they have no choice, I mean, they have everything back home. So, I appreciate, appreciate my administration that definitely helped me do this at school, and definitely Course of Action Puerto Rico, and they do need help still, it's not over. The South Putnam Church gave me a whole truck full of diapers, I drove all the way from Aquila, which seems to me like, it's like, go make it to Putnam, an hour 25 walk, and make it to Magic Kingdom, you know, in 30 minutes. But for diapers and for our people, I did it, and I'm just proud of our school that did it, and everybody that helped. All the private donations, I'm gonna end up just giving a little bit of a poem that I read to my friends every time I talk to them on the phones. Another story was, I called my dad's sister, and she's like, oh, we're good, we have no power, we have no electricity, and in the conversation, I could hear her voice cracking. This is like, a week after the hurricane, I'm like, Auntie, why are you crying? She's like, I only want two gallons of gas. I said, can you find gas? She's like, I just want to save the leftover food that I have, because after this runs out, I have no more food. And it didn't matter that you have thousands of dollars in your bank account, there was no places to buy food, everything was shut down. And still, still bad right now, a bag of ice costs you $7. And to be, to get a bag of ice, you had to wake up and be in a line for three, four hours, and by the time you get home, if you know the tropics, it's half of a bag of ice, it's all melted, it's sad. But they're rebuilding, they're just fighting Puerto Ricans, we're strong people, we don't give up. So, every time I talk to my friends, I always leave them with my short poem that says, "If you cannot fly, then run; if you cannot run, then walk; if you cannot walk, then crawl; by all means, keep moving." Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So, thank you for your time, and don't forget, it could have happened to us, we were quite lucky up here, so just blessings to my people, and I hope we could do more for them, so when you see collections out there, any little big helps, it's gonna be a long process, but they will get up, they are standing up, and they will do it, so thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay, for that explanation, and our hearts go out to Puerto Rico, and I just appreciate all the time and effort you've put in. I want to thank Sandy Scranton also, our purchase, from our purchasing department, I believe she provided the truck to...
Yes, she provided the truck, and also, if I forget my family, they are gonna, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in trouble with a suicide video as well. So, thank you to my family who definitely support me all the way through it, and my wife who had to deal with two rooms full of items inside the house for about two and a half weeks, so definitely thank you to my family for helping on that too.
Well, on behalf of Ms. Langston, Aquila, and the Putnam County School District, I want to present you with a certificate of appreciation, and this says, "This certificate is awarded to Jay Torres in appreciation for outstanding dedication and service above and beyond the call of duty, aiding in the relief efforts for Puerto Rico following Hurricane Maria, presented October 17th, 2017." So, let's give him a big round of applause again.
I've got a good story to tell him about Ms. Langston sometime.
Thank you.
Jake, did you, did you reach out district-wide, or was it just contained to West Putnam?
I, I did.
Because I believe we can do better than that.
I did send an email to Dr. Surrancey, and I know that some schools did a little big of collections here and there, I mean, it's not over, so if you have connections, if you know other people, right now, the corporation that, that I'm working with, Course of Action, they're looking for a lot of canned goods, they have big companies down in the Tampa Bay area who are donating hundreds and hundreds of cases of water, which is definitely needed, but they're still looking for canned goods and baby items, that's like, one of the big things that they're looking for. They're also looking out there, people say, okay, I like to give money, you know, money is great, but when we buy the items, it's better. They're also looking for Walmart gift cards, like $5 gift cards, because they could go to the store and buy the items that they need. Till this day, I spoke to my best friend just two days ago, woke up at 4:00 in the morning to try to get some water bottles for her kids. She went to seven grocery stores, and in seven grocery stores, she found no water. Finally, she gone to eighth grocery store, and they sold her four bottles of water, of the ones that we drink, for about $3 a bottle, and that was the only thing that she could buy, and that's the only thing that she have. There goes days, the kids are back in school, the government opened the schools back up, they're only going for half-day, and it's mostly for social skills. The kids needed to be out of chaos and try to have some structure, just like to get, like to give our kids at school, some structure that they know, there's, there's some food, there's a place that you could feel safe, and you don't have to be home in, but the schools, many schools have no power, they have no running water, so they can only keep the kids for about, about three hours or so each day. So, that's, that's where we are right now, so if you know, yes.
If we get Walmart gift cards, can we send them to you at...
Yes, you could send it to me at Aquila, or I could come pick them up too, if it's, you know, you feel safer, and that'd be fine. Anything will help, I'm still in contact with the corporation down in the Tampa Bay area, you could Google them, they have a website, Course of Action Puerto Rico, they have sent over 2 million pounds of food and water, they have a lot of big sponsors down in the Tampa Bay area, from sport teams to just people up there that have their resources to help them, because they're using private planes and cargo ships to deliver everything to the island, and once the items get to Puerto Rico, then they're distributed by the same organization to the people. So, they are not just sitting on a port, as you see in the news, there's hundreds of cargo containers sitting on the ship, because they are specific ones that can only be handled by certain people. This is by Course of Action Puerto Rico, and they handle the stuff themselves.
Jay, if you organize another collection, just let us know, and we'll definitely reach out to our other schools.
Okay, great, thank you so much, yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you again for coming.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mike Griffith from Georgia Pacific and Renee Huff from Putnam County School District to come up. Mike has a little check, he wants to, I don't know if it's little or not, but he has a check.
A little check. Good afternoon, y'all. I am Mike Griffith, Vice President of Operations here at the Mill in Palaca. I joined the team back in May, and I'm just thankful to be a part of the team and the community, so thanks for having me today.
Thank you, Mike.
I would tell you that, on behalf of the company and 856 team members at the Mill, we are terribly excited to present to the school district a check for $22,000 today to purchase lab equipment for our advanced manufacturing curriculum that was just recently embraced by the, by the school district, so thank you very much for that, we're excited to present that to y'all. I would tell you that, I gotta get my glasses, I can see a few of my notes, we're especially grateful to Dr. Surrancey...
As well as Ms. Huff.
...for making this happen so quickly, so it's, something that came on us pretty quick, and just with a compressed timeline between them and lots of other folks, for able to make that happen, so we're terribly excited that the class of 2020, the graduating class of 2020, will have our first opportunity to potentially have some certified production technicians graduating from our Putnam County High School, so that's very exciting. Terry's in the process now, he always puts our spending plan together for contributions for the upcoming year, so without making any promises, I can tell you that he's working hard on making sure that y'all might see us back again next year, so we're excited for that as well, so Terry always does a nice job for us there. I guess the other thing I would say is, with this being so new, I'm sure there are probably lots of uncertainties with the students, as well as challenges of just getting this thing all together, so on behalf of the Mill, if there's some things that you thinks, you guys think that we could help with, from a resourcing perspective, having some subject matter experts come in to try to help develop the program or recruit the program, just please make us aware of those requests, and we'll see how we might be able to try to help with that. Yeah, so we would, we'd enjoy being a part of that, actually. So, again, thank you for being responsive to the opportunity. We really desire, as a company and as a Mill, to be able to have our local folks have the qualifications needed to be qualified to come in and get a job and really develop a career with our company, so we don't hire folks for jobs at our Mill, really hire folks for careers, so this will be a huge step for our county, and we're so excited to be a part of that with y'all, so thank you, and I've got a check here for $22,000 I'd like to present to somebody.
Before you do that, I would just like to say thank you to Terry and...
Yes.
...for all of the hard work that he's done, and the mentoring that the employees at the Mill have done with our students, and working on this project, it's just very exciting for us.
Shane, you're the chairman, go down with Rick while, and get the check. That way you get it, you're the chairman, you're supposed to do it.
And before that, if I, if I could put Ms. Huff on the spot, and just give us a couple, a couple comments about how this will be used, and how important this is to getting this off the ground, if you don't mind just conveying that.
No, sir, thank you. Good afternoon, board, just a little update on our advanced manufacturing program, we have purchased the curriculum that this money will go towards, it's a first-year curriculum through the Bluegrass Associates, and it's the, it's an online curriculum, as well as some of the tools, that we call them little toys, for the kids to use and utilize with this program. So, we had training for our two instructors two weeks ago, and we were delayed with the hurricane, but we have had the training, and the two gentlemen are using it, as well as we took our manufacturing tour last week, and we took 68 students that are enrolled in the programs at all three high schools, and we went to its manufacturing month, and we went and toured the Vacon Corporation in Green Cove Springs. So, the word's getting out there about manufacturing, and our students are learning, and we have purchased the first year in this particular curriculum.
Thank you, Renee.
Oh, yes, we do have girls. You got Ms. Gilliard, yes.
Our GP, family and partners have always been very supportive of our education program, so that's wonderful.
Just normally, back to Emily.
Okay, I have not received any public comment cards, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Jorgensen, is there anything you would like to pull?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Buckles?
No, ma'am.
And Ms. Gilliard?
No.
Okay, you have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, that was...
Too easy.
Too easy.
Hush, let's keep our fingers crossed.
Except, I want to say one thing, I didn't pull it, but I just want to say, I read every one of the...
School Improvement Plans.
School Improvement Plans, and they were wonderful, I mean, it's just obvious how much work went into each of those school improvement plans, but there were three schools that their vision statement really stood out to me, and I just kind of wanted to very quickly read them. The first one was from James A. Long, Mary Beth Hedstrom is the principal there, and their vision statement says, "I am somebody, I was somebody when I got here, I'll be a better somebody when I leave. I am powerful and I am strong, I deserve the education I can get here, I have important things to do, people to impress, and places to go. I will make it a great day, or not, the choice is mine." To me, that just gave me cold chills when I read that, and another great one, they're all great, but these really stood out, was from Browning Pierce, where Ashley McCool is the principal, and it says, "The bare vision. At Browning Pierce, we are a unified family of learners who nurture and challenge each student to excel in the classroom and community, every child, every day." And I know that board member Cummings sees that in action, because both of your boys are there, right? So, she gets to experience what's going on there. And then the third one was from Crescent City High School, where Dr. John Shelby is the principal. "Crescent City High School will become a place where students lead and take ownership of their education. Our school family displays school pride and collaborative spirit, and our graduates are prepared to compete in today's world as productive citizens." And that's what every school aspires to do, and I'm just so proud of all the work that they have put in to writing these school improvement plans, so thank you. Okay, so where are we now, since I interrupted the agenda? No, gosh, no emergency items? No unfinished business? And now we'll have new business, which is discussion input and action on a recommendation from our insurance committee, and I don't know if Danny's coming up, or Paul, or who, who's gonna do that?
Paul's the chair of the committee.
Yeah, well, Paul's the chair.
I think you have a handout too, from Ms. Odom?
Paul's, Paul's kind of the hand behind the throne.
I was gonna ask if any of our board members attended the workshop yesterday, and if I could get some input, I had a family thing going on, and I didn't make it, so maybe after Danny talks to us, I could hear from some of you.
I'm Danny Page, I'm your insurance broker, or one of, there's a team of us, but I'd be glad to go over, we met for long, three hours yesterday to go over the plan design changes, so we have agreed that with the new avail program, that we are going to be making some targeted plan design changes to help steer the behavior of the employees of the school district, and then obviously, our goal, ultimate goal is to get our relatively bad loss ratio under control. So, with that being said, we have made some, some changes. One change that we did not make is the original health savings account that we have now, which would be considered Plan D, it has stayed in effect, we didn't make any changes to that plan. However, we did add another health savings account program with a higher deductible, with the ultimate goal of trying to get the rates as close as possible to the board contribution, so that, well, we, we didn't really...
Call it...
E, are we calling it?
Six, that was number 16.
E, yeah. We made some jokes back and forth as to what we were gonna call it, but it is E.
I wanted it F.
Yeah.
Yeah, F.
And it got us as close as possible to the board contribution, so round numbers is it would cost the employees about $67 a month to have a group health insurance plan. So, that, that was our goal there, and then we made some changes to the PPO plan, where the majority of our large claims are coming in, and the changes would be, right now, we have a $30 primary care physician copayment, it stays the same, right now, we have a specialist 60, a copayment of $60 to go see a specialist, it will move to $75. Right now, to go to the urgent care center at 75, that will be moving to 150.
Even though, no, remember, we talked about that they're now primary care?
Yeah, but, yeah, so that's if you go out of the county, all right, so that's worst case, so let's say you were in Orlando at Disney, like the young man brought up earlier, and you had an accident, went to an urgent care center, then that's worst-case scenario, but your two main urgent care centers here have, have agreed to charge the same co-pay as a, as a primary care physician.
And Danny, when y'all go to each school, y'all will make that clear?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because that was even new to us, yeah, a lot of this is gonna be a change, but it's for the betterment of the district, obviously. This is one of the, the issues we wanted to get under control, so right now, you have an emergency, emergency room copayment of $350. It's gonna go towards your deductible and co-insurance from here, we have some overutilization of the emergency room, where people run to the emergency room first, when they could go to one of the urgent care centers for a whopping 30 bucks, which would be really cool, but they're going to the emergency room. Now, obviously, some folks go to the emergency room because they need to, but we have... room because they need to, but we have identified many that go because it's convenient. And we have to change that behavioral pattern. So, that's part of the Avail program there. Diagnostic testing, right now, goes to your deductible and co-insurance. You will have a copay for diagnostic testing. So, we want to encourage you to get the tests that your doctor recommends. So, it goes to a $350 copay instead of going to your deductible and co-insurance. So, there are some good changes that we made. Your deductible is $750 now. We moved it to $1,000. And your out-of-pocket maximum is $4,000 now. It moved to $6,500. Currently, with your prescription drug program, you have a $100 deductible before the copays kick in. We have done away with the $100 deductible. Your tier-one drugs remain $15. Your tier-two are gonna move from $30 to $45. And your tier-three are gonna move from $50 to $85. But so that everyone knows, 81% of your employees use tier-one drugs only. So, that was a relatively small impact to help us drive down the cost of the premiums. We also increased the out-of-network deductibles significantly because 99% of the school district uses in-network physicians. So, it was ridiculous for us to keep a really rich out-of-network program in if nobody was utilizing it, and that helped us get the rates down as well. So, with all that being said, we reduced the rates drastically. Well, I consider it drastically. We kept good programs here. We added a new program for the employees to try and encourage employees to participate in the plan. And we'll be rolling these out at open enrollment throughout the month of November.
Danny, could I ask that when you do compile this information and it goes to the employees, that a letter you get with Mark Modle and let Mark send the letter on behalf of the representative of the bargaining unit and as the ramrod of the insurance committee to explain to employees exactly what's occurred?
Absolutely.
Because they need to know that this is strictly...
Strategy. This is not just making changes to try and get rates under control. Obviously, that was part of what we were trying to accomplish, but this is a strategy for a long-term program to get the claims under control for the foreseeable future. Again, I keep using this term. We're, we've been kicking the can down the road long enough. It's time to get control of our claims that are operating at approximately 91% loss ratio right now.
And Danny, I think it's important for everyone to know that we talked about PR and how important it is to make sure, because there are a lot of, obviously, a lot of people not using the programs and...
Not using correctly. So, one of the programs we discussed at length in the last couple of insurance committee meetings is that your folks on the PPO actually have access to, we don't call it teledoc, do we?
I couldn't get on that last night.
Teledocs, if you couldn't. Well, we have United Healthcare here. She can help you get on it. But basically, it's access to a physician through your telephone. You can even engage your camera on your phone to show them what's wrong with you. And they can actually prescribe a prescription, prescribe a prescription, and send it to the pharmacy and you can pick it up without ever going into a doctor's office. So, if you've got strep, but you're not sure if you've got strep, you can hold the phone up and show the camera to a doctor and the doctor can write a prescription. You can go to CVS and pick it up for $10. So, it's less than the primary care copay. It's always been here. The new push from Avail is to do a better job with a literacy campaign, like Ms. Jane just said, and, or Ms. Crawford, I'm sorry. Still Jane to me. But we had two people utilize that program last year out of the entire district. So, our goal is to make people more aware of what we have accessible to them. Obviously, we'll do that part through open enrollment in November. We have Calvin here that's gonna help me spearhead open enrollment. But a lot of this will continue. It will be very ongoing. Joe Albretton and Avail will be in here to hold hands with these folks.
Do you remember off the top of your head what you told the group yesterday about how many people didn't go get the blood workup to be able to utilize the, utilize the discount? That was amazing to me.
Yeah, so...
I could save $500, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, so you mean the folks forgetting the screening, that haven't gotten the wellness screening? Yeah, so you have approximately 200 people? Was that what the number ended up being? Approximately 200 folks in the school district did not go for a screening at all, so they're being fined an additional $50 apiece?
A month, right?
A month. So, $500 additional.
That's a lot of money.
A good point that I believe Mark brought up yesterday is that it's kind of crazy because if you participate in it and you go online to United Healthcare and load your information, they give you a $75 gift card just for participating in the program. So, you can actually make money rather than it costs you money. And there's also lots of other things with the new Simply Engage program that we put in. It's the newest robust wellness program we put in this past year. There's lots of opportunities to make up to $200 a year to, but it encourages you also to get healthier. And that's kind of where we're going. So, we'll be pushing that even harder this year. And we have a wellness meeting on Thursday morning and we're gonna bring out the numbers to the wellness folks and get them to assist us in pushing out the program a little bit better as well. I've got some statistics, just because you brought that up, that I read yesterday that I'm gonna read again real quick. So, out of the females that are age 40 and above, only 47.1% went for breast cancer screenings in the school district. Less than half of the employees, female employees that are over 40, have been for a breast cancer screening, which I thought everybody did. cervical cancer screenings, only 1.6%. Colon cancer screenings, 12.8%. Folks that have babies covered, and we know this is an issue, we're trying to get these, get these rates under control so we can get more young children on. This was a hot topic over the last few meetings. But the folks that do have them, well-baby visits, only 35% are taking their children for well-baby visits. Well-child visits from ages 1 to 17, only 27.8% participate. And well-adult visits, only 39.2%. So, the idea is to raise those numbers up and try to get everybody a little bit healthier, a lot healthier, actually. So, I've got lots more statistics, but I won't bore you with all of them.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't... Have you got any questions?
No, I had a comment. We talked about loss ratio and getting our loss ratio down and getting our loss ratio down. And it is about money, but it's more about lives.
Right.
We're saving lives. We're making people healthier.
So, and one of the issues that was also discussed is that we launched a very robust wellness program this past year. And obviously, it identified issues with people that hadn't been participating in the past. A couple of years ago, we only had 17% of the group participating in the wellness program, and now we have 80% participating in the wellness program. Because of that uptick in participation, we have identified issues. And when we identify those issues, they then utilize your program and our claims go up initially. The idea is that we get those identified and we get them on maintenance medications and we get them under control and we start to drive that back down. So, it's been an uptick of about 5% a year. And now, we want to start driving it back down 5% or more a year. So, it's not a switch. I keep saying this. This is not magic. The Avail program, we don't flip a light switch and everybody gets healthy next year. We all need to participate and grasp this. And hopefully, over the next three to five years, we're back in the 60s. When we're back in the 60s, we can look seriously at going self-funded if that's what we need to do. We can look seriously at changing the plan designs, basically how we would like if we're self-funded. There was lots of ideas in the last two meetings about how they want to change plan designs. Well, when you're self-funded, you can build your plans however you want to. But to get there, we need not only the loss ratio down, we also need to build up a surplus fund to pay to go into a self-funded program. So, we're getting there. We finally got a plan in place.
You brought it up a little while ago and it was a hot topic and apparently it has been, but I want us to do whatever we can, whatever it takes, to allow our employees to be able to put their families, not have to go out and get separate policies for their children to insure, because, you know, that...
Right. And those separate policies are starting to go up more and more right now. We've got communication through some training we did recently that they're subject to go up 31% this year, the individual policies. And if you're not getting...
But they gotta have insurance.
Right. And if you're not getting a subsidy, then that's gonna get expensive quickly. So, believe me, I heard it loud and clear. We talked about it a lot yesterday. And we're gonna do everything we can to get the, mainly the employee and child rate is what's been brought to my attention that we need to get under control, so...
We can't allow them to make the choice of not insuring themselves or their children.
Right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to comment that one thing that concerns me, and I've said it before, and if it's union negotiation, somebody tell me shut up and I will shut right up. But we contribute $4,500 to a single person and we contribute $4,500 to a family.
We contribute it to the employee.
Right. It's the same amount either way.
But it's the same amount. And if we want more employees on there, you know, I guess we'd have to lower it.
Well, and we did talk about it yesterday.
Yep, we did. And I've got statistics for those as well that we'll talk about later at a different meeting, but...
Considering that.
Yep. So, anyways, I'm gonna stay up here because I think y'all have one other thing coming up that has to do with me as well.
I did, I did speak with the superintendent briefly before the meeting and I think he shares the same concern that we do about the families and the kids. So, that's something we need to all get together and kind of focus on throughout the year, you know, get it straight.
Yeah, spread the word. Tell your colleagues, your friends, and even if they're not in the school district, you gotta remember that we hire employees from outside the school district. We want them to get healthy as well. So, it's, I can give you statistics about where Putnam County lands in the state. It's staggering. It's staggering. It'll make you nervous. Right. So, encourage your friends. Encourage your family. Challenge them. That's a big deal. That's what the wellness meeting will be about on Thursday, is each of them trying to put out challenges to the schools and get these people to participate. So, it's time. We need to get more participation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danny.
Danny, one other question that the board, in the letter, we've been trying to make sure that we offer dental insurance to our employees and we've had some difficulty getting those rates renewed. So, can we...
I thought we'd already gotten the rates, the renewal rates.
Not for the dental.
Not for the dental.
No. So, we don't have a renewal and we don't have claims from March. And for us to go to bid, obviously, we don't need the renewal, but we really need the claims badly to show other carriers so that we can get bids.
So, how would you feel the best way to move forward?
I have to have a vote from you guys that if you want to go to bid, that we go to bid. And then, we're gonna have to probably get somebody to help me with an email.
What's been done to get the, to get the renewal rates?
Multiple communications to the carrier to request. Basically, we're getting in a bad point, just like we talked about going to bid for the health insurance. We run too far out. We can't go to bid, so we're gonna have to move the dental renewal outside of the renewal with everything else if this continues to go on. So, it will have to be in February or March, which we can get the carriers to then make it go back to January for us. That's not a problem. But we really need those claims. We've sent multiple emails with, recently, we've had no responses since, like, Labor Day.
And I think, and Rhonda, to clarify, maybe just in this situation, because I got the email because I'm on the, as the committee liaison, but you had sent an email where the correspondence had started back in. Maybe if you just forwarded that to the other board members, basically, they've been, they've been requesting since...
I forwarded it to the insurance committee.
Right. So, that might be helpful so they'd understand why it's so an urgent need that we haven't been able to get that. There's like a stream of this many requests in an email that Rhonda sent to the committee asking for dental insurance quotes.
The renewal. We need the renewal. We can't go out for the quotes without at least the claims.
Not answered at all.
But we're not getting anything. But regardless, let's say that I get, check my phone when I get outside and we have them. I need your vote to go to bid. What we did two years ago is we added a lower-level dental plan to encourage, we had a lot of folks kind of like the health, that were not participating in the dental because it was too expensive. It was cheaper to go get cleanings on their own and pay for them by cash rather than utilizing their dental. And then, when they found they had problems, they didn't go follow up to have the problems fixed because then it got too expensive. So, we built a lower-level dental plan. We had lots of participation in it and therefore, we have had claims. We saw those through March. There have been claims in the lower-level plan. But to get an identical bid of the two plans, we need the rest of the claims from March to at least, August would be nice, or July, before we submit it. So, if they're on my, in my emails when I get back, that'd be great, but I still need you guys to vote to go to bid with the dental.
It's number six.
Okay. All right. Got you.
Paul, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I just, I just wanted to point that out. And one thing that I would like to mention and stress, and I think I've said it at the meeting yesterday, that Plan E, which is, it's a very high deductible plan, but a lot of our employees are running around, they don't have insurance because they cannot afford the insurance. This is, makes it more affordable for them. And, you know, it's a high deductible. Several of the things, the wellness checks that they can get through the doctors are free, so they can get some things, some services done before the deductible's met. But the one thing, it's something, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a safety net for them. And it's something that they can have, you know, at a low cost that would potentially keep them from going to the poorhouse, I think I've said yesterday. So, you know, that's, that's one thing that they, that we need to stress as a, as a, as a group, as far as the, the potential is there for the people to have something to, you know, something to have.
I mean, to play off of that, I met with a potential new client last week. You know people, when they usually buy alarm systems for their houses, when? After they get robbed?
After they're robbed.
Well, this young lady called me in to look at their employee census and talk to them because their number one employee had had a heart attack while he was driving their company truck. They ended up getting him off the road and getting the paramedics there and picking him up and getting him on. But he'll be making a payment on that open-heart surgery for the rest of his life. I don't care what he negotiated with the hospital. So, putting this in, it does have a high deductible, but like Paul said, all the wellness is set up, obviously, that was set up through the federal government, but even prior to that, wellness programs were in here for getting your scheduled wellness checkups from birth to 65 years old. It's all there so they can at least have that done. And then, God forbid, they had something major come on. They'd have a plan that has a $6,500 out-of-pocket max. So, if they ended up with a $200,000 bill at the hospital, they could make payments on $6,500. So, it's, it is a high deductible health plan, but it's also a health savings account. So, if they're disciplined, they could put money aside pre-tax to help with those expenses as well.
So, in this recommendation that Rhonda did send the board, we're gonna approve, we're gonna vote to approve all six items. And I'm not sure you even saw them.
No, I didn't.
No, I think we'll have to do the broker to go out and bid separate, I would think.
Because it says, it says the insurance committee recommendations.
Yeah, we made the recommendation.
Right.
Y'all have four, you know, chosen one or two not to do. Usually, you do the whole thing, whether it's just entirely up to the board.
Does any, do any of the board members have any, any of the six that they would not want to vote yes on? Because if so, then I would do it separately. But if we all are going to go along with the committee recommendation, I think one motion, I mean...
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion. We accept the insurance committee's recommendation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that includes the putting out to bid the dental insurance?
Yes, number six. Okay. You get that, Sharon? Okay, let's start with Ms. Gilliard on board reports.
None.
Did you say none? Did you?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Mr. Buckles?
I'm trying to get QI to watch a volleyball game.
Okay.
Sorry, I got Cheryl.
Oh, okay. I can't wait to hear you. I'll, I'll see a minute and make sure you're not talking about me.
Ms. Cummings?
I did want to commend Jay Torres again in all his efforts. That was really exciting. I think it's important, one of the biggest things in our school district is always to have children think about that as the act of giving. And anytime we're able to do that, we, I love to engage the kids. So, this was a perfect example of engaging our students and to giving to others that don't have. And so, that's a big, I appreciate that extra effort because I know it's a lot of work to do those things. So, appreciate that very much. There's a lot of great activities. Thanks for all the, again, the teachers are doing so much work. They're staying after with their kids, tutoring, and they want their kids to succeed so much and it takes so much time and energy away from their own family. So, the staff, the teachers, the non-instructional, all the people that are really going above and beyond, I just, I recognize how much that takes away from their own families. And I appreciate that for making our students, you know, feel special and excel. And again, it's just a, it's a good place to be for our kids to have that caring environment that they know, hey, my teacher wants to see me do well. And I see that more and more and that's really impressive. So, I appreciate that.
Ms. Jorgensen?
I really don't have anything either, except the little boy that saved with the fire. You know, that really, our volunteer fire departments do so, volunteer fire departments do so much in our community. They really do. And, you know, the training state, that's something that I remember learning when I was a kid in elementary school, getting on the floor. It stays with you your whole life. So, I commend the local fire departments for participating in that education with us for the kids.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna take up all y'all's slack.
I can't, I can't get any...
And I'll talk fast.
Well, I can't get anybody to tell me what time the game is that's probably going on, so I'll be late anyway, wouldn't I?
Well, I don't think it's been any big secret that this board has been at odds over the last couple of weeks about insurance. And we've clashed publicly over various issues that it involved.
Really?
And I'm in hopes that this type of behavior has come to an end. And I apologize for my part in it. Even though I said in a previous meeting that I wasn't sure that I could work with this board, that was my emotions talking. Y'all knew that. I was wrong. I want to be a part of this team and a part of the solution. I, we all need to do our job in a civilized, professional manner. And the yelling and the snide remarks and the eye-rolling needs to stop. We're better... and the eye-rolling needs to stop. We're better than this, and I expect it to change. We must work together to put students first and teachers first, and I think that's what we're all here to do. With that being said, I have spent quite a bit of time at Browning Pierce and at QI and at Kelly Smith the last couple of weeks, and I've seen so many wonderful things. You just, unless you're, you go into those schools, you just can't even imagine what the teachers are doing in those schools. I even got to hold Petey the feigning goat when I was at QI Roberts, and that was a lot of fun. Those kids had a great time during their, was that y'all's homecoming week?
Yes.
Yeah, and we have our referee out here for the Powder Puff game. That was a lot of fun. Their band performed, and they were awesome, even the flag girls, Ms. France, they were wonderful, too.
Hold on, can I break in? Do you know what time the volleyball game is?
Oh, gosh.
I know they were getting ready as I looked.
So, you probably need to run on out there.
We'll let you go.
Y'all let me go.
Bye. Another important thing, but there's, you're gonna miss some good information. I've been a part of the community assessment team for Mosley for the past few weeks, and that's the team that's going to decide among the three options if Mosley doesn't make a C. But, Mosley's gonna make higher than a C. I just don't even think there is a doubt of what's going, you know, what's gonna happen there. And there'll be more information on that. We're gonna, I'm requesting a board workshop to hear from the folks at Mosley and about some updates that they want to share with us on November seventh. Kathy, we're gonna move the one about the early learning to December. We have our board organization, reorganization meeting, the second meeting in November. The parade, David's already gone, but he knows it's Thursday at five o'clock at the waterfront. There will line up down there. I'm picking up a truck from St., what's the name of it?
Chevrolet.
Beck Chevrolet. And we'll be down there in all our glory as, as a team of school board members at the parade.
At the river.
Yeah, yeah. Kinda like Third Street, Second Street area, I think, is where they're gonna, where they're gonna start lining up.
Oh, you won't know what color the truck is until you've got it.
No, but we, I've got our sign and everything, so we'll...
Okay, so we'll find each other.
So, anyway, that's all I've had. I've had a lot going on. Does our attorney have anything she would like to say? We're so glad you're here, Ms. Yeshua.
Thank you for the warm welcome. I don't get over here very often, but I am happy to be here. I'm also happy to report that there's no report. So, everybody just can relax.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for filling in today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Serency?
Yeah, very briefly. First of all, I want to introduce Felicia Franklin. She's right here in the front row. And Felicia is our new administrative assistant.
Soon to be K-Hen.
Soon to be K-Hen. She's, she's gonna be responsible for doing a lot of our media connections. She'll be talking to you guys a lot and reaching out to our schools and our media contacts, and she's gonna get to know Scott pretty well. But, first thing, first thing on, off the, right off the bat, she's gonna be putting out around the district publication tomorrow. We'll be sending that out tomorrow, and she's put that together. You're talking about things going on in the schools. We really wanna publicize that and make sure, you know, we, we make sure everybody sees around the county what's going on. So, and we're gonna give her a couple of days off when she gets married Friday.
That's good.
But, anyway, good luck with that, but we're glad to have you. Second of all, we talked about school improvement plans. Our principals will be presenting their school improvement plans November second and third, I believe. First and second, sorry.
Who do they present them to?
Well, they're presenting to each other and to the district leadership team. And I wanna invite you, if you'd like to come hear those presentations.
November second, first?
November first. I think elementary is first, secondary is second.
What time?
Eight-thirty AM.
In here?
Starting eight-thirty, yeah, in here. We did this last year. This'll be our baseline, and then, we'll have them come back mid-year. But, we wanna continue to see improvement in all of our schools. So, it's really good for principals to see other principals presenting to see what they're doing. And it was very helpful last year. But, we have high hopes for all of our schools. Third thing I wanna mention is, we, I actually spent the day yesterday in Tallahassee. I met with our commissioner and chancellor of education, and we talked about, I wanna get some clarification about Mosley, what their expectations were. You mentioned Mosley a minute ago. So, I think we have a real good plan in place for Mosley. And I'm like you, I'm very optimistic that Mosley's gonna do a C or better this year. But, we are looking at, you know, we always have to have a plan, so that plan is something I think's gonna be very workable. And tomorrow, if you get a chance, if you wanna tune into the state board meeting, you can see that live on the FLDOE website. And they're actually meeting in Jacksonville, and they will be approving the top two plans for eighty-eight schools in the state. Five of those are our schools.
Are they as exciting as our board member, board meetings?
Uh, I wouldn't use exciting. A little intense, but not exciting. But, they're all about business, and so, tune into that. We definitely will be watching that, too.
Nine o'clock?
Starts at nine, I believe. Does that sound right? You can go to the site, and they'll tell you what the times are. But, anyway, very important meeting tomorrow. So, we are working very hard to make sure that we are moving our schools ahead, okay? That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.